Again, at the Book of Revelation. And we are in chapter fifteen, verse number one. We'll take it through sixteen, verse number eleven. I wouldn't go farther, but we would be here all night, so I decided to shorten it up a bit. We're talking about the seven angels with the seven plagues. And this is also the seven, we'll be looking at the seven bold judgments, the first five of them we'll be looking at tonight. Would someone read Revelation, chapter fifteen, verses one through eight?
I saw in heaven another great and marvelous sun. Seven angels with the seven last plagues, last, because with them God's wrath is completed. And I saw what looked like a sea of glass, growing with fire, and standing beside the sea, those who had been victorious over the beast and its image, and over the number of its name. They held hearts given them by God, and sang the song of God's servant Moses and of the Lamb. Great and marvelous are your deeds, Lord God Almighty; just and true are your ways, King of the nations. Who will not fear you, Lord, and bring glory to your name? For you alone are holy; all nations will come and worship before you, for your righteous acts have been revealed. After this, I looked, and I saw in heaven the temple, that is, the tabernacle of the covenant law, and it was opened. Out of the temple came the seven angels with the seven plagues. They were dressed in clean, shining linen, and wore golden sashes around their chests. Then, one of the four living creatures gave to the seven angels seven golden bowls, filled with wrath of God, who lives forever and ever. And the temple was filled with smoke from the glory of God and from his power; and no one could enter the temple until the seven plagues of the seven angels were completed.
Amen. So in verse number one, we see that this is the preparation of the final seven plagues that we'll take a look at more closely in chapter sixteen. The final seven plagues are the direct judgment of God upon this earth. These final seven plagues finish the wrath of God. In verse number two, we see an encouragement for the tribulation saints. Tells them that, "Those who conquered the beast and its image, and the number of its name." As, as the, these tribulation saints are going through this great tribulation period, John wants them to know there is hope. They're not being left alone. They are conquering the beast and his image. Even if they give their lives up, they still win. They overcame the beast and his image, and the mark of the beast by the blood of the Lamb. We see that in Revelation, chapter twelve, verse eleven. "And they have conquered him by the blood of the Lamb and by the word of their testimony; for they loved not their lives even unto death." And they, they sang the song of Moses, and we see this in the book of Exodus. Says, "Then Moses and the people of Israel sang this song to the Lord, saying, 'I will sing to the Lord, for he has triumphed gloriously; the horse and the rider he has thrown into the sea. The Lord is my strength and my song, and he has become my salvation. This is my God, and I will praise him, my Father's God; and I will exalt him. The Lord is a man of war; the Lord is his name. Pharaoh's chariots and his host he cast into the sea, and his chosen officers were sunk in the Red Sea. The floods covered them; they went down into the depths like a stone. Your right hand, O Lord, glorious in power; your right hand, O Lord, shatters the enemy. In the greatness of your majesty, you have overthrown your adversaries. You send out your fury; it consumes them like stubble. At the blast of your nostrils the waters piled up; the floods stood up in a heap; the deeps congealed in the heart of the sea. The enemy said, 'I will pursue; I will overtake; I will divide the spoil; my desires shall have its fill of them. I will draw my sword; my hands shall destroy them.' Oh, but you blew with your wind; the sea covered them; they sank like lead in the mighty waters. Who is like you, O Lord, among the gods? Who is like you, majestic in holiness, awesome in glorious deeds, doing wonders? You stretched out your hand, your, your right hand; the earth swallowed them. You have led your, your steadfast love. You have led in your steadfast love the people whom you have redeemed. You have guided them by your strength to your holy abode. The peoples have heard; they tremble; pangs have seized the inhabitants of Philistia. Now are the chiefs of Edom dismayed; trembling seizes the leaders of Moab, and the inhabitants of Canaan have melted away. Terror and dread fall upon them; because of the greatness of your arm, they are still as a stone, till your people, O Lord, pass by, till the people pass by whom you have purchased. You will bring them in and plant them on your own mountain, the place, O Lord, which you have made for your abode, the sanctuary, O Lord, which your hands have established; the Lord will reign forever and ever." This song of Moses is a song of the Lord's victory over the armies of Egypt. It was sung after the Lord's final judgment upon the armies of Egypt, when they were drowned in the waters of the Red Sea. We see that this, these tribulation saints will also sing the song of the Lamb. Says, "They were saying, 'Great and amazing are your deeds, O Lord; great and amazing are your deeds, O Lord God, the Almighty; just and true are your ways, O King of the nations. Who will not fear, O Lord, and glorify your name? For you alone are holy; all nations will come and worship you, for your righteous acts have been revealed.'" So the song of the Lamb is a song of the Lord's victory over the fallen world. It is a song of the Lord's works, his ways, his name, and his holiness. Israel was beside the Red Sea when they sang the song of Moses. These tribulation saints are beside the sea of glass and fire when they sing the song of Moses and the song of the Lamb. In verses five through seven, "After this I looked, and the sanctuary of the tent of witness in heaven was opened; and out of the sanctuary came the seven angels with the seven plagues, clothed in pure bright linen, with golden sashes around their chests. And one of the four living creatures gave to the seven angels seven golden bowls, full of the wrath of God, who lives forever and ever." So in verses five through seven, we see the preparation for the final seven plagues. These seven plagues occur during the last three and a half years of the tribulation period. These judgments are, are much more severe than the previous judgments from the Lord. These judgments of the fi, of the, the judgments of the first three and a half years leave room for repentance, as do the warnings of chapter fourteen. We see in chapter nine, verses twenty and twenty-one. Says, "The rest of mankind, who were not killed by these plagues, did not repent of the works of their hands, nor give up worshiping demons and idols of gold and silver, and bronze, and stone, and wood, which cannot see, or hear, or walk; nor did they repent of their murders, or their sorceries, or their sexual, sexual immorality, or their thefts. They were given the opportunity to repent, but yet they did not." The judgments of the last three and a half years leave no room for repentance. In verse number eight, says, "The sanctuary was filled with smoke from the glory of God and from his power, and no one could enter the sanctuary until the seven plagues of the seven angels were finished." Going into the sanctuary represents the forgiveness of sins. Sins being paid for, atoned for. No one is allowed to enter. God is keeping up wrath and judgment on people who refused to repent. If you remember, the plagues of Egypt were designed for Pharaoh to repent. And it would say, "And Pharaoh hardened his heart; and Pharaoh hardened his heart; and Pharaoh hardened his heart." But then it changes. And then it says, "And the Lord hardened Pharaoh's heart; and the Lord hardened Pharaoh's heart; and the Lord hardened Pharaoh's heart." This is what happens in the last three and a half years. It will be very, very difficult for people to come to Christ during these last three and a half years. They've refused every opportunity that they've been given, and now the Lord is saying, "Enough. You cannot repent now." No one is able to enter the temple until the plagues are finished. Contrast that with chapter eight, verse one, where, where there is silence in heaven for about half an hour prior to the seven trumpet judgments. Says, "When the Lamb opened the seventh seal, there was silence in heaven for about half an hour." I believe during that time, there is silence because they're, 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 they're praying, "Lord, bring in a harvest." There, there's, there's silence because they see the severity of the coming judgments after this. So now in chapter sixteen, would someone read chapter sixteen, verses one through eleven?
Then I then I heard the loud words from the temple saying to the seven angels, "Go on and pour out the bowls of wrath of God on the earth." So the first angel poured out his bowl on the earth, and a foul and lonesome storm came upon the men, who had the mark of the beast, and those who worshiped the beast. Then the second angel poured out his bowl on the sea, and it became blood, as of a dead man, and a heavy living creature in the sea. And the third angel poured out his bowl on the rivers, and springs of water, as they became blood. And I heard the angel of the waters say, "You are righteous, O Lord, the one who is, and who was, and who is to be, because you have judged me. For they have shed the blood of saints and prophets, and you have given them blood to drink, for it is just their due, it is their just due. And I heard another from the altar say, 'Even so, Lord God Almighty, true and righteous are your judgments.' Then the fourth angel poured out his bowl on the sun, and power was given to him to scourge men with fire; and men who were scorched and wetly, and they blasphemed the name of God, who has power over these plagues; and they did not repent, and they did not rejoice. Then the fifth angel poured out his bowl on the throne of the beast, and his kingdom became full of darkness; and they gnawed their tongues because of their pain; and they blasphemed the bar of heaven because of their pains and their force; and they did not rejoice, but they
Amen. The last thing God wants to do is to pour out judgment. In Ezekiel eighteen twenty-three, the Lord says, "I have, have I any pleasure in the death of the wicked?" declares the Lord God. "And not rather that he should turn from his way and live." Ezekiel thirty-three eleven, says, "Say to them, as I live," declares the Lord, "I have no pleasure in the death of the wicked; but that the wicked turn from his way and live." Turn back, turn back. The word "turn back" is, is where we get the word "repent." The word "repent" means turn around, go the opposite way. My, my daughter lives up in Flagstaff, and she sent me pictures today. There's two ways into her house, which is a good thing, because one way got washed out today, and there was a school bus that was sitting on the road, but the road had washed out underneath it. So that, that whole way was blocked. So if you were going that way, you had to make a U-turn. You had to turn around. You had to turn back. You had to repent. This is the meaning of the word "repent." Turn back, turn back, from your evil ways. For why will you die, O house of Israel? God takes no delight in the death of the wicked, but the death of a saint is not the end. Psalms one sixteen fifteen says, "Precious, in the sight of the Lord, is the death of his saints." Why would God not want to see the wicked die, but he calls the death of the saints precious? The death of the wicked is the i, i, is where their, their fate is sealed. They, they've made their decision. They have rejected every chance that the Lord has given them. Once they die, they're done. There is no repentance. There, there, there is no purgatory. There is no holding place where, where sins will be redeemed after death. There is no life after death back on this earth, where, where people get to get a do-over, where they come back and they, they get to atone for their sins of their previous life. No, the death of the wicked is the end of their physical life on earth. From there, they are judged. At the end of time, we'll, we'll look at that later in the Book of Revelation, but at the end of time, they will be cast into the lake of fire because they've rejected Christ. But precious are the death of his saints, because when you and I die, as believers in Jesus Christ, we step away from our earthly body and we step into the presence of the Lord. All we're needing, all we're waiting for after that is to receive our resurrected glorified body. But we will never be outside of the presence of the Lord for the rest of eternity. That's why the Lord says, "The death of the saints is precious." God has two options for mankind. Option one, this is the preferred option. It's reconciliation. Matthew eleven twenty-eight through thirty says, "Come to me, all who labor and are heavy laden, and I will give you rest. Take my yoke upon you and learn from me; for I am gentle and lowly in part, and you will find rest for your souls; for my yoke is easy, and my burden is light." As I watch the news, it is full of people who are not at rest. They're striving for something. They're striving for satisfaction. If you look in the Sermon on the Mount, the only one who finds satisfaction are those who thunder, who, who hunger and thirst after righteousness. But we see this world striving after something that they, they cannot grasp onto. Men are not satisfied in how they were created, and they want to be women. Women are not satisfied in how they were created, and they want to be men. Men and women are looking for the world's satisfaction. They're, they're, they're looking for fame. They're looking for glory, only to find out that it's emptiness. The, the Book of Ecclesiastes says it's soap bubbles. It's vanity, soap bubbles. Soap bubbles are fun to play with. I love watching children play with soap bubbles. They'll chase them all over. What happens when they catch them? It's gone. This is what we do as adults. We, we, we chase after things that we think will satisfy us. "Oh, if I could just capture that soap bubble, my life would be complete." And we get to the soap bubble, and we go to grab it, and it disappears. True satisfaction is only found in Jesus Christ. Second Corinthians, chapter five, verses twenty and twenty-one. Therefore, we are ambassadors for Christ. That's you. That's me. That's not just paid church staff. That is us. We are ambassadors for Jesus Christ. God making his appeal through us. God making his appeal through us. We are his instruments to bring people into reconciliation. We implore you, on behalf of Christ, to be reconciled to God. For our sakes, he made him to be sin, who knew no sin, so that in him we might become the righteousness of God. Jesus paid the price for our sins. Jesus did everything he could to make a way for us. Those of us who have accepted Jesus Christ, we go out and our job is to tell others. Our job is not to force anybody to convert. We cannot do that. There's no way that I can force somebody to change the position of their heart. It, it, it's like the little kid who, who says, his teacher says to him, "Johnny, you need to sit down during class." Pretty soon he stands back up. "Johnny, you need to sit down during class." Pretty soon he stands back up. "Johnny, sit down." He sits down. He folds his arms. And he says, "I may be sitting down, but in my heart, I'm standing up." We're like that. You know, we, we can't force anybody to change the position of their heart. All we can do is tell them. That's our job. We are ambassadors. We are to proclaim Jesus Christ to a world who is striving for peace and satisfaction with God. The second option is judgment and wrath. These are the only two options you have. These are the only two options for all of mankind. Judgment and wrath are always the last option. You say, "But Pastor Bryan, I don't like option one, and I don't like option two." No, by default, if you don't accept option one, you are, you are accepting option two. There is no option three. You see, God does not live by your rules. Our desire is to be God. That goes all the way back to the Garden of Eden. So option one is be reconciled to God, knowing that he is God and we submit to him. Option two, we're the God of our own life, in which case we accept judgment and wrath. Look at the way God describes himself to Moses in Exodus thirty-four, verses six and seven. Moses says, "Lord, I want to see your glory." He says, "Well, you, you can't see me, so I'm going to put you in the cleft of the rock, and I'm going to put my hand over you, and I am going to proclaim my name as I pass by." Here's how he describes himself. Says, "The Lord, the Lord, a God merciful and gracious, slow to anger, and abounding in steadfast love and faithfulness, keeping steadfast love for thousands, forgiving iniquity and transgression and sin, but who will by no means clear the guilty, visiting the iniquity of the fathers, on the children, and on the children's children, to the third and the fourth generation." The Lord is patient. The Lord is kind. The Lord is long-suffering. And he has done everything necessary to bridge the gap between him and us. He bridged that gap at the cross on the body of Jesus Christ. First Timothy two, verses three through six, tells us this is good. "And it is pleasing in the sight of God our Savior, who desires all people to be saved and to come to the knowledge of the truth; for there is one God, and there is one mediator between God and man, the man Christ Jesus, who gave himself as a ransom for all, which is the testimony given at the proper time." Second Peter three, verses nine and ten, "The Lord is not slow to fulfill his promise, as some count slowness, but is patient toward you, and not wishing that any should perish, but that all should reach repentance. But the day of the Lord will come like a thief; and then the heavens will pass away with a roar, and the heavenly bodies will be burned up and dissolved, and the earth and the works that are done on it will be exposed." The Lord is patient. But don't mistake his patience for him giving people a pass for sin. No one gets a pass for sin. Either we pay the price, or Jesus Christ paid the price. But one way or another, the price will be paid. If we don't accept Jesus' gift, then we have to pay for the penalty ourselves. And don't, don't think God has forgotten about us. The reason he is patient and long-suffering is because he's, he's not willing that any should, should, should perish. He, he is not willing that any should, should fall under his wrath. We, we, we live in a time now where there is great delusion. As I look at the world and, and see the way the world is going, it breaks my heart, but we are to expect this. This is, is not taking God by surprise. And he is long-suffering. He is delaying his return. I believe the reason that God is delaying his return is because, because there's still people that need to hear, that need to hear about Jesus. The Lord delayed when he told Noah to build a ship. Genesis six, verse three, says, "Then the Lord said, 'My, my spirit will not always abide in man forever; for his flesh, his days, shall be one hundred and twenty years.'" God told Noah, "You got twenty, one hundred and twenty years to build a boat and to preach repentance." And after a hundred and twenty years, there was only seven others that came into the boat with Noah. Hebrews eleven, verse seven. "By faith, Noah, being warned by God concerning events as yet unseen, in reverent fear, constructed an ark for the saving of his household. By this he condemned the world, and became an heir of the righteousness that comes by faith." The Lord was also patient with the Amorites. as their iniquity had not yet been completed when He gave Moses, or gave Abraham the promised land. So He told Abraham that his family would go into Egypt while the Lord gave the Amorites time to repent. We see this in Genesis 15, verse 16. And they shall come back here in the fourth generation, for the iniquity of the Amorites is not yet complete. We also see that God sent the reluctant prophet Jonah to Nineveh, and they repented. Although God hates sin, and what it does, He loves the sinner and gives them every chance to repent. But the wrath of God is never directed towards His saints. We see in Genesis 18, verse 23 through 26. This is when Lot was down in Sodom and Gomorrah, and, and Abraham is bargaining with God. Says that Abraham drew near and said, will you indeed sweep away the righteous with the wicked? Suppose there are fifty righteous within the city. Will you then sweep away the place and not spare it for the fifty righteous who are in it? Far be it from you to do such a thing, to put the righteous to death with the wicked, so that the righteous fare as the wicked. Far be it from you, shall not the judge of all the earth do what is just? And the Lord said, if I find in Sodom fifty righteous in the city, I will spare the whole place for their sake. You know the story. Judgment came upon Sodom and Gomorrah. There was Lot, his wife, his two daughters. That was it. There weren't fifty righteous. Uh, there weren't forty, there wasn't thirty, there wasn't twenty, there wasn't ten. There wasn't even five. Four escaped, and one turned back. Uh, she, she turned around and, and longed to be back with the people she loved, not with the God she loved, and she was turned to a pillar of salt. John 3, 36, says, whoever believes in the Son has eternal life. Whoever does not obey the Son shall not see life, but the wrath of God abides or remains on him. 1 Thessalonians 1, verses 9 and 10. For they themselves report concerning us the kind of reception we had among you, and how you turned to God from idols to serve the living and true God, and to wait for His Son from heaven, whom He raised from the dead, Jesus who delivers us from the wrath to come. It is Jesus who delivers us from the wrath. This is why I believe in a, the rapture of the church. The church will be raptured at the beginning of the tribulation period. Are there other views? Yes, there are. Am I right? I believe I am. If I believed I was wrong, I would believe something different. There are some that believe that the church will be raptured in the middle of the tribulation period. And that could very well be. Uh, there are some who believe that the church will be raptured at the end of the tribulation period. That could be the case. But I see in Scripture that God delivers us from the wrath of come, wrath to come. Now, that, that does not mean that we will not experience tribulation. That does not mean that we will not experience the wrath of Satan and his followers. But our wrath was paid for on the cross. Uh, God does not pour out His wrath upon us because He poured out His wrath upon Jesus for us. So, this is why I believe in a pre-tribulation rapture. But if I'm wrong, I'm going for a mid-trib rapture. And if I'm wrong, I'm going for a post-trib rapture. But what I do know is God will take us through no matter what. We were not destined for wrath. 1 Thessalonians 5, 9 through 11, for God has not destined us for wrath, but to obtain salvation through our Lord Jesus Christ, who died for us so that whether we are awake or asleep, we might live with Him. Therefore, come encourage or comfort one another and build up one another, just as you are doing. Uh, the wrath of God is always aimed at the lost or the unrepentant with the goal that they would repent. The wrath of God is His final judgment against sin. The wrath of God only comes after He has given opportunities for repentance. In the Great Flood, we see that God gave them a hundred and twenty years. Sodom and Gomorrah, they were given an opportunity to escape if they were righteous. And in the seven-year tribulation period, we see that God is reaching out one last time so that people would repent. In each case, the righteous are protected, and the wrath of God was poured out on the rebellious. Now, we also see that there are some similarities as we look into chapter 16. Similarities with the Exodus and the, and the plagues. We see the water being turned to blood and, and the fish die in Exodus, chapter 7. We also see this in Revelation. A third of the seas turn into blood and a third of the creatures die in chapter 8, verses 8 and 9. We call this the second trumpet judgment. And a third of the rivers, oh. Why did I lose my? I've lost my signal somewhere along the way here. A third of the rivers and the springs become bitter, and that's in Revelation, chapter 8, verse 9. Okay, we may be coming back up here. We call this the third trumpet judgment. And we see the, the, the sea turns to blood and all aquatic creatures die in Revelation 16, verse 3. This is the second bowl judgment. We see the waters turning into blood and, and and, and all the rivers and springs turn into blood in the Book of Revelation in chapter 16, verse 4. And this is the third bowl judgment. We see frogs in Exodus, chapter 8, verses 1 through 6. And then we see in Revelation 16, verse 13, unclean spirits like frogs are released. This is just after the sixth bowl judgment. We see gnats in Exodus, chapter 8. We don't have a correlation for that in, in the Book of Revelation. We see insects as a plague in Exodus, chapter 8, but we don't have a correlation for that. But then we do see pestilence in Exodus, chapter 9, verses 1 through 9. And we see it in Revelation, chapter 6, verse 8, with the fourth horsemen. We see boils in Exodus, chapter 9, verses 8 through 11. We see the boils are on man and on beast. And in Revelation 16, verse 2, we see boils, something like loathsome and malignant sores. This is the first bowl judgment. Hail and fire in Exodus, chapter 9. We see this in Revelation. We see hail and fire in chapter 8, verse 7. This is the first trumpet judgment. They are one hundred pound hailstones, and in Revelation 16, verse 21. This is the seventh bowl judgment. We see locusts in Exodus, chapter 10, verses 12 through 15. And in Revelation, chapter 9, verse 3, we see that something like locusts is are, are released from the bottomless pit. And this is the fifth trumpet judgment. There we are. In darkness, we see in the Book of Exodus, chapter 10. And in Revelation, we see a third of the sun and moon, and stars are darkened in chapter 8, verse 12. This is the fourth trumpet judgment. And the beast kingdom is darkened in Revelation 16. This is the fifth bowl judgment. We see death in Exodus, chapters 11 and 12, the death of the firstborn. And in Revelation 20, verses 11 through 15, we see the great white throne judgment, the second death, the final judgment. Verse number 16. Then I heard a loud voice from the temple saying, uh, telling the seven angels, go and pour out on the earth the seven bowls of the wrath of God. Uh, some versions will say that this voice comes from the altar, some say it comes from, uh, someone near the altar. But a voice from the temple directs the angels to pour out the bowls of the wrath of God. The bowl, the seven bowls are the seven plagues. Verse, chapter 15, verse 1 says, then I saw another sign in heaven, great and amazing, seven angels with seven plagues, which are the last, for with them the wrath of God is finished. And in verse 8 of chapter 15, and the sanctuary was filled with smoke from the glory of God and from His power, and no one could enter the sanctuary until the seven plagues of the seven angels were finished. Uh, so these seven plagues represent the full and complete and unrestrained wrath of God. In these seven plagues, the wrath of God is finished, is complete, is over. Chapter 16, verse 17. The seventh angel. I don't think that reference is correct, but, uh, maybe. Uh, oh, yeah, that one is correct. Uh, the seventh angel poured out his bowl into the air, and a loud voice came out of the temple, from the throne, saying, it is done. Uh, this word done, gignomai. Uh, this means the, the birth pangs are complete. The word means become, born, come into being, taken place, came about. Uh, it, it, it's a, a term of childbirth. Uh, the baby has been born. The, this completes the wrath of God. Although this is a different Greek word, it carries a, a very similar idea as Jesus' declaration from the cross. Says when Jesus had received a sour wine, He said, it is finished. And He bowed His head and He gave up His spirit. It is finished. It is complete. Uh, the word there is telostai. Uh, it, it is a marketplace, uh, legal term, uh, means paid in full. So this one, where Jesus on the cross said, the price has been paid, it's paid in full, there's nothing left to be paid. And then now, the one in Revelation, chapter 16, verse 17, says, it's done, it's, the baby has been born, it, it, it's completed. In chapter 16, verse 2. So the first angel went and poured out his bowl on the earth, and harmful and painful sores came upon the people who bore the mark of the beast and worshiped its image. As we saw earlier in our study, once you take the mark of the beast, there is no repentance. So this wrath is being poured out on those who have taken the mark of the beast. Uh, this is the first bowl judgment. This is God's wrath upon the earth and those that take the mark of the beast, as the mark of the beast is a visible representation. So is God's wrath upon those that take the mark of the beast. These sores are visible, these sores are prominent, these sores do not go away. Chapter, in verse number 11, says, and cursed, uh, and they cursed the God of heaven for their pain and sores. They did not repent of their deeds. So even as the, the fifth angel emptied his bowl, these sores are still there. So the sores come during the first bowl. Now, later, we have the fifth bowl, and they still haven't repented, and they still have the sores. Says the, they are harmful and painful sores. Uh, this first bowl links with the sixth plague of boils upon the Egyptians. Exodus, chapter 9, verses 8 through 11. And the Lord said to Moses and Aaron, take handfuls of soot from the kiel, and let Moses throw them in the air in the sight of Pharaoh. And it shall become fine dust over all the land of Egypt, and become boils breaking out and sores on man and beast throughout all the land of Egypt. So they took soot from the kiel and stood before Pharaoh. And Moses threw it in the air, and it became boils breaking out and sores on man and beast. And the magicians could not stand before Moses because of the boils, for the boils came upon the magicians and upon all the Egyptians. And back in Revelation 16, verses 3 through 7. Uh, the second angel poured out his bowl into the sea, and it became like blood of a corpse. And every living thing died that was in the sea. The third angel poured out his bowl into the rivers and the springs of water, and they became blood. And I heard that the angel in charge of the waters say, just are you, O holy one, who is and who was, for you brought these judgments? For they have shed the blood of saints and prophets, and you have given them blood to drink. It is what they deserve. And I heard the altar crying, yes, Lord God, the Almighty, true and just are your judgments. Now comes the second and third bowl judgments. Wrath upon the sea and the rivers and the springs. The sea becomes blood, like that of a dead man, thicker than water. If you ever go to the Dead Sea in Israel, you put your hand in and it, it feels thick. It doesn't feel like water from your, your, your tap or water from a bottle. It, it, it's, it feels more like oil. Uh, this will be very thick water that is, Bible calls it blood. Won't be anything to drink. Every living thing in the seas dies. Uh, the freshwater rivers and springs also become like blood. The second and third bowl judgments link with the first plague in Egypt, when the Nile turned to blood. Chapter 7 of Exodus. Thus says the Lord, by this you shall know that I am the Lord. Behold, with a staff that is in my hand, I will strike the water that is in the Nile, and it shall turn into blood. The fish in the Nile shall die, and the Nile will stink. And the Egyptians will grow weary of drinking from the Nile. And the Lord said to Moses, say to Aaron, take your staff and stretch out your hand over the waters of Egypt, over the rivers and their canals and their ponds and all their pools of water, so that they may become blood. And there shall be blood throughout all the land of Egypt, even in vessels of wood and in vessels of stone. Moses and Aaron did, as the Lord commanded, in the sight of Pharaoh and in the sight of his servants. He lifted up the staff and struck the water. He lifted up the staff and struck the water in the Nile, and all the water in the Nile turned into blood. And the fish in the Nile died, and the Nile stank. So that the Egyptians could no longer drink water from the Nile. There was blood throughout all the land of Egypt. Contrast that with the second and third trumpets, where only a third of the seas and the rivers are turned to blood. In chapter eight, verses eight through eleven. The second angel blew his trumpet, and something like a great mountain burning with fire was thrown into the sea, and a third of the sea became blood. A third of the living creatures in the sea died, and a third of the ships were destroyed. The third angel blew his trumpet, and a great star fell from heaven blazing like a torch, and it fell on a third of the rivers and on the springs of water. And the name of the star is wormwood. A third of the waters became wormwood, and many people died from the water because it had been made bitter. About one-sixteenth of the world's food supply comes from water-based sources. Think of fish, think of rice. All of that being flooded with water, coming from the waters. Just think of how much of your diet comes from the waters. Imagine all the devastation and the stench. The reason for this plague of blood is because of the persecution and the shedding of the blood of the righteous. Jesus places the blood of the prophets at the feet of those that desire to kill him. In Matthew, chapter twenty-three, we read, therefore I send you prophets and wise men and scribes, some of whom you will kill and crucify, and some you will flog in your synagogues and persecute from town to town. So that on you may come all the righteous blood shed on earth, from the blood of righteous Abel to the blood of Zechariah, the son of Baccariah, Barakiah, whom you murdered between the sanctuary and the altar. Truly, truly, or truly I say to you, all these things will come upon this generation. And in Luke, we see the same thing. Therefore, also the wisdom of God said, I will send them prophets and apostles, some of whom they will kill and persecute, so that the blood of all the prophets shed from the foundation of the world may be charged against this generation. From the blood of Abel to the blood of Zechariah, who perished between the altar and the sanctuary. Yes, I tell you, it will be required of this generation. The blood of all the saints, the blood of all the righteous throughout all the generations will be avenged. Revelation sixteen, verses five and six. And I heard the angel in charge of the waters say, just are you, O holy one, who is and who was, for you brought these judgments? For they have shed the blood of saints and prophets, and you have given them blood to drink. This is what they deserve. It is an angel now who is declaring the righteousness of God in his wrath. And in verse seven, and I heard the altar saying, yes, Lord, the Almighty, true and just are your judgments. Here's where some people say it's a voice coming from the altar. Some say it's someone near the altar. Either way, the meaning is the same. But don't let it surprise you if it's actually the altar speaking. In Luke, chapter nineteen, the Pharisees were angry with Jesus as he is coming into Jerusalem. And they, and the people are crying out in worship. And some of the Pharisees in the crowd said to him, teacher, rebuke your disciples. He answered, I tell you, if these were silent, the very stones would cry out. If the very stones can cry out, don't be surprised if an altar can cry out. In Revelation six, we hear the tribulation martyrs calling out for justice. When he opened the fifth seal, I saw under the altar the souls of those who had been slain for the word of God and for the witness they had borne. They cried out with a loud voice, O sovereign Lord, holy and true, how long before you will judge and avenge our blood on those who dwell on the earth? Then they were each given a white robe and told to rest a little while longer until the number of their fellow servants and their brothers should be complete, who were to be killed as they themselves had been. So in chapter six, the martyrs are asking, how long? In chapter sixteen, we hear the altar declare, you are just and true in your judgments. Back in chapter sixteen, verses eight and nine. The fourth angel poured out his bowl on the sun, and it was allowed to scorch people with fire. They were scorched by the fierce heat, and they cursed the name of God who had power over these plagues. Yet they did not repent and give him glory. The fourth bowl judgment. Wrath upon the sun. The earth's protective atmosphere is unable to protect the people from the scorching heat of the sun. The results of the increase, a result, this results in the increase of the fourth trumpet judgment, where a third of the sun and moon are darkened. Now the intensity of the heat of the sun, even though it is cut by a third, is still intense and unbearable. Revelation eight, twelve. The fourth angel blew his trumpet, and a third of the sun was struck, and a third of the moon, and a third of the stars, so that the third of their light might be darkened, and a third of the day might be kept from shining, and likewise a third of the night. The sun's intensity grows while the beast's throne darkens. Men are scorched with fire and fierce heat. It's not hard for us to imagine in the middle of summer what this would be like. Verse nine. Then now contains the first of three blasphemies. Says, they cursed the name of God, and they did not repent. They did not give him glory. They blasphemed the name of God. They do not repent so as to give God glory. And this blasphemy is worse than just a curse. It is knowingly declaring a falsehood about God. Matthew, chapter twelve, verse thirty-one. Therefore I tell you, every sin and blasphemy will be forgiven, people, but the blasphemy against the Spirit will not be forgiven. The people of Jesus' day saw the works and the miracles. They knew it was the work and miracle of God, and yet they did not want Jesus to be their Messiah. They blasphemed the Holy Spirit because they rejected Jesus. Back in chapter sixteen, verses ten and eleven. The fifth angel poured out his bowl on the throne of the beast, and its kingdom was plunged into darkness. People gnawed their tongues in anguish and cursed the God of heaven for their pain and sores. They did not repent of their deeds. Now wrath is being poured out upon the throne of the beast. Darkness comes upon the throne of the beast. While the sun's intensity increases, the beast's throne grows ever darker. It is a thick darkness. It is a painful darkness. It causes them to gnaw on their tongues. The one who falsely declares himself as God can do absolutely nothing but blaspheme the God of heaven. This links with the ninth plague of darkness over Egypt. Then the Lord said to Moses, stretch out your hand toward heaven, that there may be darkness over the land of Egypt, a darkness to be felt. So Moses stretched out his hand toward heaven, and there was pitch darkness in all the land of Egypt, three days. And they did not see one another, nor did anyone rise from his place for three days, but all the people of Israel had light where they lived. Verse eleven, has the second of three blasphemies. They blasphemed the God of heaven, back in chapter sixteen. And again, they cursed the God of heaven, for they did not repent. I'm gonna stop there and we'll pick it up there next time. This is a key thing throughout this tribulation period. God is calling out for people to repent. God is calling out for people to repent today. But we see people continually turning their backs on God, continually rejecting God, continually wanting to be their own God. We see a strong delusion that is moving rapidly across the world. Now is the time for people to repent. Now is the time to where even we, as believers in Jesus Christ, need to stop playing. So many people who call themselves Christians don't live a life of obedience to Jesus Christ. They live a life of their own choosing, of their own pleasure, wanting to be their own God, but yet wanting to go to heaven. I pray that God would even reveal our own sin to us, that we would live a life of repentance, that we would live a life that displays the character of God to others. The time is short. Ever since I've known Rana, whenever he prays, he says, in the name of our Lord Jesus Christ, who's coming back soon. I believe it's even sooner now than it was a few minutes ago. And you say, oh, that, yes, that goes without saying. I believe it's true, though. I believe that the Lord could come back at any time. Question is, what do we want to be doing when he comes back? Do we want to be his ambassadors? Do we want to be doing what he has called us to do? Or are we busy making TikTok videos or seeing what the next TikTok video is? I tell you what, I am not, I don't watch TikTok, but I do watch other reels and stuff. I find you watch one, and you watch another, and you watch another. And pretty soon, you have an hour where you've done nothing productive. So I am not preaching at you, I'm preaching at me. We need to redeem the time. I need to redeem the time. People can dance on TikTok, and that doesn't tell anybody about forgiveness found in Jesus Christ. We need to be about our business of being ambassadors. Let's pray. Lord, we want to thank you. Thank you for loving us. Thank you for calling us. Thank you for giving us a job to do. And Lord, may that ever be at the forefront of our mind. That we need to redeem the time, for it is short. So Lord, use us. Lord, send in one more great harvest of souls before you return. But having said that, Lord, we desire that you return quickly. The evil of this world is pressing on our souls. But Lord, give us one more. Give us one more. In Jesus' name I pray. Let's pray for the food, and I would love to pray a blessing over you. Lord, thank you for the food and the fellowship we'll have after the service. Lord, I want to thank you for these brothers and sisters that are here. Thank you for the ones that couldn't join us tonight. Lord, would you use us for your glory? Bless our conversation, bless the food, bless the hands that have prepared it. Lord, bless this church who makes a place for us. Lord, I ask that you would meet the needs of pastors in countries where they need your supply. Lord, would you, would you give them an abundance? In Jesus' name I pray. Who's coming back soon?